It's ten o'clock, I believe that we are live. So I now call this special meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. Thank you all for joining from various places. If at all possible, please try to keep your cameras on. I know that might not be possible if you have low bandwidth, you're traveling. I'm gonna start with an audible roll call, so I'll just call your name. And if you check, we'll make sure that we can see you, then we can proceed. So Dennis, are you here? You'll need to unmute, so we can check your mic.
Here.
Can you unmute and just say here?
Here. Can you hear me? Okay.
That's okay. Kathy, you're next, can you unmute please and say here?
Here.
We can hear you. Anne? Here. Thank you. Dina?
Here.
Jim Porter?
Here.
And Danny, Zach?
Here.
We can hear you, you're a little soft, you might wanna lean in when you speak. But you're good. Betty?
Here.
Excellent. And I do not see Jim McNeese, so it looks like we have nine board members present of our ten. And Jim McNeese is absent, he is traveling and was...
Is Michelle, is Michelle with us?
You're right, and we do not have Michelle, so we have eight out of ten, thank you. A lot of scores on my screen. Okay, we have one item on today's agenda, and that is to consider the request of USD 113 and USD 115 for the June State Board of Education meeting. So during our monthly meeting last month on May fourteenth, during public open forum in the boardroom, the state board was served with a petition for oral argument by USD 115 NIMHA. And we're here today to decide whether to allow that oral argument after we received the decision from the hearing officer regarding NIMHA's petition for transfer of territory. And that hearing was conducted in Burn, lasted nearly four hours, I think that there are three and a half hours of video, and that is expected to be available to the board on May thirtieth. So today we have an opportunity to discuss as a board whether or not we want to grant this petition. I wanna point out that on the thirtieth, when we receive the report from the hearing officer, we will get a data dump of a lot more information than we have right now. Up until this point, we have not had access to the video or any of the documents from that meeting in Burn. And so it's the responsibility of the hearing officer, that data will be delivered, and then not just the hearing officer's recommendation, but also the three and a half hours of video that was the hearing, as well as the presentation that would... And so in the June board meeting, we can then accept the hearing officer's recommendation, or we can make changes similar to how we would do with, for instance, a PPC case. Right, where you have the PPC, the Professional Practices Committee, which meets and reviews a case, and then they bring us their findings and a recommendation. And the board will often vote up or down, but sometimes we do make changes. And so in this case, if we were to make changes, it would similarly be our job to justify whatever decision we make in this outcome. And Mark can assist us with that. So in this instance, Mark Ferguson is counsel for our board. And Scott Gordon, yep, there's Mark. Mark, I should've called on you to test your mic, but I think we're gonna be good. And then Scott Gordon, of course, serves as counsel for KSDE. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mark and let him kind of bring us up to speed on what we need to know as we go forward making this decision. And Mark, feel free to fill in anything I missed.
Sure, good morning. Mark Ferguson, counsel of the board, and my apologies for missing the last month's board meeting. I hope it didn't create more problems than... So my apologies, but I'm glad to be here this morning. Also would include Commissioner Watson and the board secretary if we have any additional things to add on kind of the scheduling and information that will be available in terms of timetable. So just to add an additional overlay to everything that the board chair Ha said, it's anticipated that the hearing officers' report and recommendations will be made available to the board with all of the supporting information, including a link to the public hearing that was conducted, all of the pleadings that were provided by the parties. And I, at least it's been described as several hundred letters from patrons that the hearing officer received. So all of that information, which referred to as a data dump, because it's gonna be a lot of information, will be available to the board and to the general public at the same time when, whenever that board packet is published. And it's anticipated, according to the schedule, on May thirtieth. And so that's quite a bit of information. It's not necessarily unusual to get that much information. This is more of a PSA, I guess, to say, we don't, you know, that's the predicted schedule and timetable, that's what's been described that would occur. And absent, you know, some unforeseen circumstances, it's my understanding that we're gonna be on that same schedule. And everyone will have not only the information and recommendation of the hearing officer, but all of that other information, which I've kind of generically described as the universe of information or the record that is being presented to the board for consideration on the petition for land transfer. Just for term of art, there's the only issue for consideration by the board today is whether or not the motion, whether a request described as a motion for oral argument would be entertained by the board. The actual petition for land transfer and all of the requests that goes into what is going to be presented to the board is part of this public hearing process, and the due process has been provided to the parties leading up to your June board meeting. So I just kinda wanted to add, supplement and add in terms of the flavor of what's happening and the universe of information that will be coming to you shortly. So I'll be quiet and let, ask any questions or others jump in.
Mark, can I ask you to share with us what this statute says and what our responsibility is? Both how the special, sorry, how the public hearing in Burn is handled by a statute, and then whether that relates to this request?
Right, yeah, and I will pull, I'll share my screen, I pulled up the statute. When I was considering the issue of what the business of the board today, about what the, whether the petitioner's motion for oral argument, I thought it'd be helpful for you to know, you know, not in a vacuum about what that oral argument might be, but what's the universe of information? So that's why I wanted to kind of lay the foundation that you will be receiving quite a bit of information next week. And then to your question, Chairwoman Haas, I will share my screen and pull up the statute so that you can see the statutory language involved in in what you're being asked to do in June under seventy-two, five thirty-two, subpart C. And if somebody can't see this, or if I'm having technical difficulty, somebody will shout out to me. But under subpart C of the statute, notice of the public hearing on such a petition shall be given by publication. So that was done in publication in newspapers, so the publication occurred. And there's some specific timeframes in C, and that's why I'm trying to make a distinction between, you know, the public hearing, which was when, which was conducted in Burn, had opportunity for counsel to be involved, provide pleadings, exhibits, members of the public came, and that's what the hearing officer presided over. And so you will have all of the information that was conducted in that public hearing, and that just sets off the notice, kind of the notice provision by statute as to how you get notice to the world, if you will, of that public hearing. Subpart D says that prior to issuing an order, the state board shall consider the following, and it has one through eleven. And I won't read them out loud, but you can see that there are a number of factors that the board shall consider prior to issuing an order. So those are things that you would look at and consider in rendering an opinion or a decision. And then subpart E says within ninety days after receiving an agreement or if a public hearing is held, which is what you'll be, you know, what you'll be considering is the evidence and information, the recommendations of the hearing officer following the public hearing. Within ninety days after the hearing, the State Board of Education shall issue its order either approving or disapproving such transfer petition or approving the same with such amendments as it deems appropriate. So like Chairwoman Haas explained, it would be very similar just in terms of process and procedure to what you typically do with a PPC. Is, and that is that the board is the ultimate decider of those issues related to licensure. And in this case, the board is the ultimate decider of this land transfer petition. The statute, the rules, the board rules allow the board to appoint hearing officers. So because a hearing officer can gather that information, conduct hearings, and so in this case, the board appointed a hearing officer to go out and gather that information and bring it back. It doesn't replace the board's ultimate authority, but it, you know, for a variety of reasons and for different causes, but the board has the legal authority to appoint a hearing officer to go out and gather that information so that you don't have ten board members going out in the community, having to, you know, coordinate and travel and all of that. But you still are gonna get that information, it's gonna be synthesized, it's gonna be compiled, and you are gonna have, you know, recommendations from the hearing officer, and that's the purpose. But ultimately, the buck stops with you, and then you'll either approve, disapprove, or approve with amendments that you deem to be appropriate. And my job would be to help you help put together the final order that would match, you know, that the language of the order would match the decision of the board and carry out the board's intent. So the hearing officer is authorized by, you know, by statute, by procedure, and is commonly utilized for, you know, conducting hearings and gathering information and reporting back to the board.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Watson?
Thanks, Chair Haas. Excellent overview, Mark. I wanted you to also just remember as you're making this decision, whatever you decide today, you will hear that presentation from the hearing officer, and whatever you decide today on Tuesday, your vote and your deliberation and your decision will be made on Wednesday. So there will be some time there to reflect before that final vote, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. So for sure, you will have the presentation of the hearing officer and all evidence on Tuesday. You're here deciding today whether or not you wanna add oral arguments to Tuesday. That would all take place on Tuesday. Then there would be deliberation by the board and a vote, whatever your decision is, on Wednesday morning. Thank you, ma'am chair.
So today we have the opportunity to discuss, and then the potential is there for us to make a motion. You will note that in our packet, there is no recommended motion. This is very much a will of the board discussion and conversation. And so I'm gonna open up the discussion, and I think I saw Anne raise her hand. Anne, do you wanna start?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd be interested in Mark's interpretation of the legal aspects of the petition and the response. Were they correct on the law? And would there be a break in precedence if we did allow the oral arguments?
And before I do that, I always hate to correct the commissioner, because that's so rare, and I hate to be in that role, but I wanna be as precise as possible. The request is for oral argument between the time that the hearing officer issues the recommendation and the time the board votes. So just to be precise, while the normal board schedule is on Tuesday, and that, you know, you are gonna hear, the request of the petitioner is simply that an oral argument occur at some time between when that is issued and you make your decision. So it's, I mean, completely up to the will of the board, but it could occur at a special meeting, it could occur some other time. So between the time it's issued on May thirtieth and the time that you vote. So it could be altered slightly, my apologies, Mr. Commissioner. But to your question, you know, I think, I don't have, other than the argument and the persuasive request that the motions had with regard to the need for oral argument, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not taking a position on that, but you asked two parts. One is, did they cite the law? Yes, they cited the law in terms of the, you know, constitutional authority of the board, the statutory authority of the board. The, both of the briefs explained that the board has the authority to appoint a hearing officer. And so went through the four or five kind of fundamental steps about, you know, what's the law in this area? I don't believe that, that the, that providing a hearing would be some inappropriate departure or precedent one way or the other. I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's gonna be a situation where you have to grant oral argument in all of them. But I would also say, on balance, there's nothing in the statute that says you have to provide oral argument or grant the request. I don't think it's going to provide you, either way you go, in my opinion, is not going to change or put the board at legal risk. Because when I look at it, I'm more focused on what's the due process in the hearing, and what is the universe of information that you have? So if you feel that, if it's the will of the board to grant, you know, an additional step to provide oral argument in that process, that's within your discretion. But I don't feel that it is, I won't, I won't comment on that. I don't believe that there's any precedent or persuasive authority in their request that's gonna, gonna be necessarily detrimental to the outcome of this. This is gonna be based on all of those factors that the statute lays out, which are non-exclusive, non-exhaustive. And the board is gonna consider all of the information that's been presented. And in my opinion, looking at that history and looking at all of that data, and some of which, the reason why I'm going to great lengths to explain, what you will receive is because you're kind of asked, being asked to make a decision in a vacuum, perhaps described as the cart before the horse, because you're asking, you're considering whether or not somebody would give oral argument without yet having the benefit of all of this, what I'm describing as the universe of information. So when you, when you receive that, so today you're being asked, should, you know, should we grant oral argument when, to supplement the universe of information? That's up to you.
This might, thank you, ma'am chair, this might be more the question for Mark. But if I use the word closing argument instead of, you know, this oral argument, which to me is more of a closing statement, is there a difference when I say that in how, could think about approaching this? Because, you know, does that make sense?
Well, you've worked in a law firm, I know that, so you, you're familiar with the, you know, the terminology. And so in a trial, a opening statement would be a prediction of what you're going to hear in the evidence through the trial. A closing argument is a summation or a persuasive argument to, it is an argument because you're using information that came out during the trial. And so if you apply that analogy to this situation, I think it was probably more appropriate to, if you were gonna apply that analogy, I think that the petitioner is asking for an opportunity to provide a closing argument because they're gonna refer and emphasize evidence that they believe to be important to their case. So it's described generically as a, as a oral argument, but if you were to insert that into the trial context, it's probably a closing argument.
Okay, thank you, that helps me, thank you.
Any other questions? Danny, and then Dina.
I think I'm unmuted now. I'm one of those ones that, since this is my district, the other schools within Prairie Hills, they have made decisions among, without coming to the board. These two school districts are huge rivalries. And to me, I would like to see, since they asked to come in front of the board, I would like to see them have oral arguments. And then there, we got a lot of negative emails about Scott being the hearing officer. Which, that's fine, I have no problem with him being a hearing officer, but I'm one of those ones that like to let people have their voice, at least. If we cut them off, I feel, I don't feel comfortable with that personally. What, doesn't matter how we vote, they got to come in front of the board and see eyeball to eyeball with each person. That's all I have to say.
Dina?
Well, this was my old district, I guess you could say, before redistricting. And I know the anger that exists. And so I'm sort of leaning toward what Danny just said. It's giving them an opportunity one more time to say what, and to make sure we hear what they wanna say. But the thing that I really raised my hand about was to ask if this is similar, since we were making analogy to Professional Practices Commission and the decisions we make after they've made a decision. I wondered if, to some extent, this argument isn't sort of like a person that comes before the Practices Commission with their their license on the line, so to speak. And they are arguing their point. And so to me, it's much the same kind of thing from, in that regard. So it's one last time for, for them to make sure we've heard what they have to say. And so from my point of view, it seems appropriate to me to allow that type of interchange.
Dennis?
I am reading these petitions and the response, then. It seems like there's three things that come to the surface. Has to do with distance or transportation, representational local board, and taxation. And I look, you know, if the boundaries will change those three things, it just makes sense to me that, that we allow hearings from somebody who has been hired to represent. It just seems like the American way to do things. And so I would, I would like to hear, you know, I know that there's a lot of time put in at the hearing at Burn, and, but I think it's only really a democratic process that we need to consider this morning. That's the way I look at it.
Any other? Ann?
I think those are all good comments. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I think we're, I think if you think that things not going your way, it's not uncommon to complain about how it was all done. And we know our hearing officer and, and know the quality of the work he does, so I'd be anxious to see it. I guess my question again is for, for Mark, two of them actually. Whatever we do in June is gonna make somebody unhappy, and I suspect there will be an appeal either way. So what would that process look like?
Sure. I dissect my answer into two parts. One is that the only thing I'm really concerned about is the, the legal challenge to lack of due process that someone might have. So that's why I was focusing on the, all of the steps that lead up to the decision, and there's two components of due process that are, that are important, and that's notice and opportunity to be heard. So my legal position is that there's no lack of due process by not providing an opportunity to provide an oral argument before you make a decision. That's a legal position because I think there's been sufficient notice, opportunity to be heard all along the way or various times, and it complies with the statute, so I'm not concerned about that. The, the components that you're raising are certainly within your, you know, purview to consider as the state board, but all I, you know, my, my role is to make sure that there is, that it's subject to, or it's, would, would, that that request, regardless of how you vote, would withstand a legal challenge to that specific request. The procedure would be, you ask for, you know, what, if the unhappy party is, wants to challenge that, once again, using the, the analogy of the PPC, is it would be an appeal to the district court to consider, or to reconsider the decision of the board. And I think there would be great deference to the decision that the board would, you know, would make, and, you know, that's, that would be, our objective is, in making that decision, whatever that decision might be, would be justified based upon the entirety of the record, and that you, you know, so, so when I talk about the record, I'm talking about all of the information leading up to this universe of information that you're gonna rely on. I am not of the opinion that, 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 that the absence of an oral argument is gonna, is gonna change the record. The record appears to be very comprehensive. You will have it, and you'll have all the information you need to make an informed decision. Now, once again, yeah, so, yeah, so I'm trying to paint a big picture because you don't know what you don't know, and that, you haven't been presented, you haven't even been presented with the, you know, with the, with the recommendations of the hearing officer, so you're, you're being asked to make a, a policy choice in a vacuum without knowing who might be the, the unhappy party.
Well, it really is the cart before the horse, but I'm wondering if, if we did have a hearing, could that preclude or eliminate just one more argument on appeal? Like, we did everything we could.
It, it could eliminate, but I'm telling you publicly, that I don't think that that's, I think that's, just because they have one more argument, that they didn't get a, a oral argument at, you know, at this stage, I don't think that's, I don't think that strengthens their, their basis for appeal, but that's my opinion. A district court might, might disagree. I, since you're asking that question, I think it's worth putting into the public, just stating the obvious, that you're all assembled here in a special meeting, which is fairly rare, and you're giving this due consideration. So while this may be perceived as a self-serving comment on behalf of the board, I, you know, we, this was not scheduled. You've got board members that are spread literally around the world, and you have taken a Friday to assemble to give careful and thoughtful consideration to this issue. So I don't think that, even if you decided against them, I, I mean, it's pretty clear from the deliberation, the thought, and the time that's put in to this specific request, that you're giving that, you know, careful thought and deliberation, and in my opinion, that's, that's what the board is obligated to do. The board is not obligated to necessarily, you know, grant the request, but give it good consideration. So I hope that makes sense.
It did, thank you much.
Betty, did I see your hand up? Yes, Betty?
It takes me longer to unmute than it does to assemble my thoughts. You know, the, the thing I, I wanna add to the conversation, we are elected, and when it was kind of compared to trial and courtroom, I see just a little bit of a distinction in that regardless to how we end up voting, our constituents like to know that we are willing to at least hear them. And it seems like that's basically what this request is. Let us, in an oral argument, present our final statement. It may or may not change anything. I, I, I don't feel like that's really the point, you know, when you say putting the cart before the, however that goes, I'll probably get it mixed up. My point being, they wanna be heard. And as an elected person, I don't, I've never had a problem with listening and hearing. And, you know, with that being said, Madam Chair, if you are ready for a motion to get an idea of where we are, I'd be willing to make that, or I'm willing to just wait and let the conversation continue.
Sure, Betty, thanks. So procedurally, I think it would be okay to kind of socialize what motion you're thinking about making, and maybe get some head nods or give someone an opportunity to make a suggestion if they think it should be changed?
Okay, and, and I'm sorry, I, I thought I had provided that. I don't have a problem with hearing an oral argument, and I would make a motion that the board grants the request to hear oral argument.
And so it might make sense for us to decide when we would do that. Before you do that, I wanna ask Mark a quick question that, that may pertain to this. Mark, it seems that there may also be an opportunity for this, for our board to reconvene for another special meeting, potentially after we receive the packet of information? I'll just kind of float that out there. Is, is that something that we could do pretty readily?
I, I don't know if readily because of, you have, you know, ten members and, and the administration and everybody gathering together, but I, it, it is an option, simply because I know how challenging scheduling, you know, putting the board together and having speakers and, and all that. So I, I can't, you know, that, that's probably the better for a commissioner question, but, you know, in terms of scheduling and opportunity, you also have board members traveling, I think, internationally, so I'm not a hundred percent sure of their travel schedule, but the, the specific answer to your question is, I don't believe that the oral argument has to be on that Tuesday. I, I think that that's maybe the presumption, but if, if that was, if you wanted to do something different, I think they're really just requesting the opportunity between the, the issuance of the written recommendation to the hearing officer, which would be by next week, and prior to your decision or your vote, given of, of course, that they may want to follow Scott Gordon's presentation, the hearing officer's presentation on Tuesday, I understand that, but it's not the way I, I think it has to be.
Thank you. This is one of the, these are the debate subjects. I could argue either side of it. The first side is that we have a precedent, we have a procedure, and that has been followed. The second was, we've been asked to, we've been asked to hear additional information. I always, I, I've given this a great deal of thought, and I always want to err on the side of transparency. We've been asked to, I, I see no downside in listening, even though it may not change the, our discussion. There are unintended, unintended consequences to everything that we do, and thi- this has nothing to do with this motion, but when we come to the board meeting, if a hundred people show up for, for our open forum, we are going to have to limit that, because we won't have time to do that. And if you look, if, if, when the agenda comes out, Frank Harwood has to talk to us on Tuesday morning because he has to leave, and that's something that we have to do. So be prepared. We have to be prepared for the first time in the ten years I've been on the board. I, there's a possibility that we'll have to limit the times for open forums, so I think we just need to be aware of that. All that being said, I second Betty's motion.
Thank you, Jim. So further discussion, and I just wanna make clear, does this motion, Mark or Commissioner Watson, need to include exactly when or what the format for this conversation will look like for the oral argument? Excuse me.
Mark can answer the legal part of it. I, I would assume that when Betty is granting the petitioner's request for oral argument, it would include thirty minutes for each one, because that was the request. So that, that's my assumption, and, and what the motion that she made, we would work to incorporate that into your June meeting as to, because that's the dates that we feel fairly confident that most people, if not all people, can be in attendance. So that would be our plan, Madam Chair.
All right. Any further discussion or questions, Kathy?
So the vote must, our vote must take place Wednesday of the June meeting?
Mark can, so you have to be within ninety days, I believe, and Mark can answer that legally. You have to take a vote prior to July one of the next school year, Kathy, so that the, most school districts know what that decision is, and, and then can make appropriate decisions related to the next school year. So by the end of June, you would need to have a vote on that. You could, I guess, postpone it. I'll leave that up to Mark as to procedurally, whether or not that bill would have to be taken, but I think it would have to be taken before the end of June.
The, the statute says within ninety days after public hearing. I haven't counted the days from when the public hearing, but my understanding was that, that, the way that was just kind of laid out, so I'd have to, I'd have to get back and look at the calendar with, from the, the actual date of the public hearing, ninety days.
Danny.
So if we're allowing another public hearing, does that extend it out another ninety days?
Sure. Board members, Zach, I, I don't, the oral argument is not a public hearing, it's just a, an, 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 an argument or additional, gathering of additional information from the attorneys representing the parties. If it's a public hearing, it requires separate publication, and that would be a whole different situation. So.
Thank you.
Did I, okay, I hope I answered your question.
Danny.
Sorry. Melanie, do we want to, Chairman, do we want to have Scott Gordon do his presentation on Tuesday and hear from the other people on Wednesday, or do we want to hear from them after Scott makes his presentation on Tuesday?
To, to Jim, to, to Vice Chair Porter's point, I think that we probably want to do that on Tuesday, and we'll just have to figure out how to work it into the agenda if that's the will of the board.
Okay.
Because we need to have overnight, I know, I mean, you all are, are great at going through the packet and doing all of the reading, and so I wanna make sure that, you know, we have overnight to at least finish reviewing that information. Kathy?
So while I know they asked for thirty minutes, do we have to give them thirty minutes, or can we pare that down in timing or have that consideration as well?
It sounds like the motion that we have right now on the table is to grant the request as it was written in the request, and so it's thirty minutes as written.
Cause that's an hour, right, if you're giving each side thirty minutes?
One could make an amendment to the motion.
Any thoughts on that idea?
I see, I saw Jim Porter and then Danny.
I would suggest that we just give them what they ask for.
I agree a hundred percent.
Any further discussion?
We all are here voluntarily. We just take an extra hour that day.
Yeah, we, we may have to order pizza.
Or at least more chocolate, Deborah.
It's five o'clock somewhere, just so you know.
All right. Any further, or shall we vote on the motion that's on the table to grant the petition for oral argument? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That is an eight-row vote. Motion passes. Before I adjourn, I'm just gonna say quickly that, as I said already, I know that you all take the time to read the packet, but I want to warn you, when this information comes to you on May 30th, you're essentially getting an extra packet. There will be a lot of written in there, as well as the three-and-a-half-hour recording from Burn, and so you want to, you know, look at your calendar today and set aside time and make sure that you're gonna have time to handle both, all of that information that's coming to you on, hopefully on May 30th, as well as the board packet that you'll get for June. So, thank you all for your time today. Mark?
Betty had her hand up before I did, but.
Betty, go ahead, and then I'll go to Mark.
Thank you. Now that we voted, I won't be in the meeting in person in June, I will be in DC, and I guess we'll, I'll have to figure out some kind of special accommodations. I'll be in a meeting there, so just for your information.
Do what we can work out with you, Betty. Thank you for the reminder and the headset. Mark?
Do you, so the, the motion is to grant oral argument for thirty minutes each side as requested, and then I will work with leadership and, and the commissioner on when that fits in, but I, in the meantime, until you figure, until you tell when, I could just tell counsel who's requested it, that that request has been granted. They may be listening, I don't know, but that, but that we, within the next couple of days, when that, how the schedule gets finalized, we'll, we will know in it, and they'll have sufficient time to plan as to when they'll be there. Or do, or are you wanting the, the board as a whole to consider when that, when that time occurs, or that just come out and we'll let them know in advance?
Yeah, the, the chair and vice chair set the agenda, so we'll review the agenda and just see, you know, what we can do to make it fit. And like I said, we, we may have to order pizza, but we'll figure it out.
Very good, thank you. I, I will let them know that it's, that, that, the request has been granted, but that we will let them know the specific time in the near future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all, I know that you'll take this seriously, Commissioner Watson.
Well, I, I, Mark, I would just add, I, I think fairly confident they would be on Tuesday. It's just, and it probably will be Tuesday afternoon, given what, what has to take place in the morning. But the, the detail of, is it two o'clock, one o'clock, three o'clock, I think would still have to be worked out.
Yeah, Jim Porter said it. We have, the, the agenda in the morning is pretty fixed. Okay. Any other questions before we adjourn? Hope we answered everyone's questions. All right, thank you all for your time today, we are adjourned.